In the common council for Monday, June 29th, 2020. Roll call a clerk.
Pull over present, your honor.
Thank you. Under the pledge of allegiance, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for indication led by Alder Chris Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Short and sweet from the Dalai Lama. Be kind whenever possible. It is always possible.
Unto approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Dorf to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 meeting. Any corrections that need to be made? No requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, I believe. Any changes you'd like to make? Saying no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Saying the ayes have it, the agenda has been approved. The report by the mayor. Just a few items that I want to touch on this evening. We have a resolution before us designating our polling locations for the upcoming election in August. So I just, you know, want to take a moment to thank the ad hoc elections committee, Alders, Dorf, and Weary, and the rest of the members of that committee and Clerk Teskey, of course, for all of their work and the work of the Clerk's office in designating locations. Ideally, we would still have 31, but, you know, I think these locations are going to meet the needs of our voters in August. And I think, I think we've all learned how difficult it is to designate some of these locations, so just want to give a lot of credit to everybody who's been involved in making that happen because that was not, not an easy task. Also, just wanted to, related to elections as well, update folks on where we are with regard to poll worker recruitment. As of today, according to Clerk Teskey, we have 151 poll workers who are signed up and have submitted all of the appropriate paperwork. You know, I'm prepared to take additional action at the, on the city staff side of things if we remain short at the end, but really encouraging people in this community to sign up. And I know that a good number of Alders have been making similar comments on social media and other places and just would encourage everyone who's able and interested and supportive of our democracy and our elections to step forward and serve. You know, I'm, I'm going to have a great deal more confidence this time around that we're going to be prepared to protect all poll workers with appropriate PPE. And so we'll just encourage everybody who's, who's able and interested to please reach out to the, the city clerk and participate that way. Also, just wanted to make a plug for absentee voting. The Clerk's office, thanks to their work and our city staff, a number of folks helped out in processing those requests. Over 10,500 requests have been processed and, and sent out already to this point. And according to the Clerk, that's a higher number than we've ever sent out for any election prior to, to this one. So, you know, it's a huge number. Obviously, we'd, we'd love to see more. You know, we have a lot of confidence that we will obviously be able to process all, all requests that are submitted and so are encouraging all voters to participate in, in that way, which is obviously the safest, given that we're still in the midst of a, of a pandemic. Also, just wanted to touch on a community meeting that we had last week. Thanks to Chief Smith and Commander Warwick and Divine Temple Pastor Green and, and the folks over there for hosting. You know, I think we had a really, really good initial conversation on, on some reforms that we're going to be taking a look at in the, in the days ahead. Thanks to a number of Alders who attended personally and those who were, were on social media observing that, that discussion. So encouraging Alders to really take an active role in this. In my opening comments, I said, obviously, you know, I speak for myself when I'm, you know, making different judgments and assessments, but the council is really our policymaking body. That's what you all are here for. So just encouraging people to take a look at that meeting if you haven't had a chance and just to dig into what folks are saying in the community and take an active role in that discussion because obviously we, we need your help and support and guidance in moving forward. Also, just wanted to touch on our plan for upcoming council meetings. We are hoping to be able to have a sort of hybrid meeting in July. So folks would like to attend in person, we'll be asking people to take the appropriate measures to, to be distanced and to wear face coverings when in the council chamber. So, so that hopefully will be an option for Alders for our July, I believe it's 21st meeting. That's all I have for the report and of course, just urging people to enjoy the fourth in a safe and, and successful way. So happy Independence Day to all the Alders and the community. And that concludes my report. Unto announcements.
I have an announcement.
Go ahead, Alder LaFave.
Um, yes. My announcement is that on last Thursday, June 25th, was my birthday. Seven decades.
Ah.
And, yeah, and I had to be in Durham County to celebrate it. So I did miss that meeting and I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't find out soon enough to change my plans. I would have gone to the Divine Temple too. That, that was very, probably a very good, good meeting and I, I'm sorry I missed it. But also my other announcement is that we celebrate the Independence Day, July 4th. My announcement is to the community, we celebrate it on July 4th. We don't celebrate it 25, 35, 45 days before, nor do we celebrate it afterwards. I wish that they would honor that. Make the day special, July 4th, with your fireworks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Dorf.
Thank you. I wanted to say some thank yous too, to the committee members. And I want to say thank you to Alder Stoyer and Alder Gerlock, who attended a lot of the meetings. They were very, very helpful and they weren't even on the committee and, and yet they were, were there. And to our Clerk, Chris Teskey, and to Celeste Dean, and Susan Smith did a great job and continues to do a great job as Chair. So also wanted to say thank you to that owner of, of the Sears Building. That is going to be a fabulous place for us to have a polling location and so grateful for his generosity. And thank the school district for the, the two schools that we're going to be able to use for the August election. So just wanting to say thank you today. Thanks.
Alder, well said. Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to comment on, obviously, the tragedy that occurred in Seymour Park on June 19th. Very sad situation for everybody involved, particularly the victims of that crime and then also the many neighbors in that area who, who have some concerns with a number of the, the things going on in that area. And so I've been working with the Seymour Park Neighborhood Association as well as some of the other community partners in that area. And this Thursday at 6:00 PM, we are going to be hosting a neighborhood meeting at Seymour Park to discuss some of the activity in that area and what we can do as a neighborhood to really get involved and be more hands-on with driving solution. And so just wanted to at least make that announcement and let those know who, who have an interest in this subject, more than happy to keep you updated on what kind of possible solutions come out of that meeting. But we really want to create a forum and so for those of you who have had experience with coordinating neighborhood meetings around very serious topics and issues, I'm more than happy to take your feedback and suggestions before Thursday. For those neighbors who live in that area, hoping that you'll be able to make it out on that date so that we can again, have that listening session, take your ideas into consideration and put them into action. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for doing that, Alder, and thanks for the announcement. Any additional announcements? Okay. Seeing none, we will move along to appointments. Move to appoint. Motion made by Alder Johnson.
Thank you.
Seconded by Alder Scannell to approve the new appointments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The ayes have it and the new appointments have been approved. Onto ordinances, second reading for adoption.
You may enter suspension of the rules. Take up items 1 through 4 with one roll call vote.
Motion to suspend.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. To suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Made to adopt item J1 through J4, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Please use the board on them.
May, Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
Unless I'm mistaken on this, on item number two, we still have included the, the parking stalls that were referred to traffic commissions on, on Broadway. So I'm not sure that those should be a part of this particular vote. And, and it is later in the agenda under the first reading. So I think that we just need to make sure that staff appropriately vote those items. And then secondly, if you could have me recorded as abstaining on item number one, or excuse me, voting no on item one.
Very good. We will note that. Staff, either Director Grenier, Attorney Chavez, you, you care to weigh in on Alder Johnson's comments about the parking spots?
We will definitely take a look at that. I've got the notes written down and we'll make sure that that's addressed properly.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Director. With that, we will move to the board.
Mayor, mine, mine's not coming up. I'll just, I'll have to vote verbally.
How, how would you like to be recorded, Alder?
Yes.
Mayor, your volume seems to be down just a little bit, Mayor Gingrich. I can't, I can't hear you quite so well. You could just check your volume. Thank you.
I will try to speak up. And those pass, 12-0, noting Alder Johnson's opposition on item one there. Report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve. Second.
Made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve Report K, which is the report of the redevelopment authority from the meeting on June 9th, 2020. Any items to be handled separately? Hearing none. All in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved. Onto the report of the Improvement and Services Committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens to approve Report L, which is the report of the Improvement and Services Committee from the meetings on June 10th and June 24th, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately?
Three.
Any others? Item three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay, the ayes have it, the report has been approved, the exception of item three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LaFave. The item was pulled by the Alder, by Alder Johnson. Alder Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, I wanted to, just as I did at Improvement Services Committee, commend staff for the great job that they did in pulling this ordinance together. It was very, very thorough and they addressed just one concern that I had at the committee. There was one though, that I left out stealing and that was related to the fee. And I, I had indicated at the INS meeting that I wanted to have some time to consult with a few other communities to determine what an appropriate fee would look like. Currently, the way that this is structured is that the fee is equivalent to the daily bag rate for a meter, which is $10 a day. And then it would be assessed at five days for 26 weeks. And then of course, if a parklet went in later in the season, that that fee would be prorated. After talking to a number of businesses in other communities, it's really, it, it's, it's a fee that is pretty substantial and would make it cost prohibitive for a business to participate. One of the things that businesses do oftentimes when, you know, they determine outdoor spaces is they'll, they'll sort of calculate how many table turns that they can do to really determine what a reasonable rate would be. But the other thing that businesses often look at is what is the cost per square foot that they pay when leasing a space? So when I did the calculation on this, for a parklet the size that we have, if somebody were to take advantage of the full May 1st through October 31st timeframe, you would be looking at $0.21 per square foot, which is a very hefty fee to pay for, for any space. I mean, even when you look at indoor spaces in the near downtown, can, can really range anywhere from $8 to $12 a square foot for indoor space. And so when you have outdoor space that can't be fully utilized, it makes it a very, very steep fee to pay. And, and again, looking again at table turns, and that is how many customers can you fit into that outdoor space? And then, and then from there, calculating the rate of return in, in terms of what somebody would want to do. So after looking, talking to other communities, I do want to propose an amendment to this that I think would be cleaner and more efficient to manage on a staff level as well. My amendment is when we're looking at item number five under fee, I would propose that we amend this and I would defer to staff on appropriate wording of this, but the amendment would be to modify so that it's an annual permit fee of $200. So whether they submit it on May 1st, or the parklet would go in on May 1st, or whether it goes in on September 1st, doesn't matter, annual permit fee of $200. And that seemed to be, and that's per parklet. So if they want to reserve two parklets, which this ordinance would give them, the ability to do, it'd be $200 times two. So that is the amendment that I would propose.
Second.
An amendment has been made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Let's have Attorney Chavez weigh in here on, on some guidance regarding how to word that. And then Alder Grenier can speak to the, the revenue shortfall that would result if we were to adopt this, this amendment and how council might respond to that to make sure that parking utility is, is fully funded.
Thank you, Mayor. So as far as fee goes, the language, so we're kind of trying to move away from having fees established by ordinance, but in terms of reviewed annually. With that, I would recommend the language states the fee for a parklet permit shall be adopted by revenue annually at a cost of no less than $20.
Okay. So we would have to follow up then with a resolution to that effect?
Yes. And that is the intent of what we're doing. I mean, so if, if we... I'm trying to figure out how we can do it so that we can move the resolutions forward at a different time while allowing us to oppose it. How about you go to Director Grenier and I'll, I'll see what I can come up with.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Attorney Chavez. Director Grenier?
Well, the proposal as amended would result the significant shortfall, especially in metered park, uh, metered parking areas. That's the reason that we established the meter bagging fee is to address the loss in revenue. And in this case, $200 a year is going to come up woefully short as Alder Johnson alluded to, the $10 a day bagging fee. If somebody were to utilize that space the entire time, would result in a, a cost of So if that is in a high demand space, especially the ones in downtown Green Bay that are utilized virtually the entire day, obviously this year's a little bit different because we don't have the businesses open as much and we're getting more requests for other demands on parking downtown. But in a typical year, we're looking at anywhere from $900 to $1,100 per stall shortfall that would be coming for metered stalls. One of the other things that has been mentioned by members of the common council through committee meetings over the past couple of years is that parking needs to do a better job of starting to accrue money in our parking reserve funds, which are used to help offset the needs that are going to come up with the new ramp. And again, we are going to have to have a new ramp sometime within the next 10 years. Absolute outside case is 2031, when the Main Street ramp is going to have to come down. That was part of the Schreiber Foods development agreement and the city is going to have to pay to demolish, uh, for demolition and disposal of the Main Street ramp in addition to selling the property over to Schreiber for the cost of the land, not the improvements. And we're going to have to replace that stall. Currently, 2020 rates, we are at just shy of $27,000 per stall in initial capital outlay. So I would not envision that we would replace Main on a, on a stall per stall basis. Main is the smallest of our ramps at 681 stalls. We are probably looking at something in the neighborhood of one and a half times what Cherry is, so that would be about 1,200 stalls. Again, we did put a lot of thought into the ordinance when we drafted it. The meter bagging fee was our recommendation to be, to make the parking division whole on the loss of the stall. The council is the policymaking board. If the council decides to go forward, that's your prerogative. However, you will be, you will be generating a shortfall in the parking division revenue and parking is 100% wholly supported.
Thanks, Director. And, and just real quickly, so, you know, my point is not at all to dissuade Alders from supporting the amendment, just to make the point that if we are to move forward in that direction, it's also my recommendation that we, we figure out a way to, to fund that gap. In talking with Director Bonk, I think it's possible that we could use some of our downtown TIDS, some of the revenue there to offset the loss, but just wanted to make sure that people were operating with as much information as possible. Alder Dorf?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think it's Alder Dorf.
Alder Johnson.
Thank you. I just want maybe a point of clarification. Like I, I, I think it's a little bit disingenuous to suggest that, that meters are 100% occupied at all times downtown. So I think that, that we need to really air that out, that like a shortfall of $900 is only applicable if you're 100% occupied all of the time. And I don't know that that's accurate. But the other piece of it is, and I firmly believe this, that if, if somebody comes up to a stall that's occupied by a parklet, they're just gonna, they're just gonna drive to the next available stall. So I don't believe that you're going to see a shortfall. I think it's just rather than collecting in that meter, you're going to bump it to the next meter. And, and so I, I do think it's important to keep that into consideration. The other piece is that I don't anticipate that you would see an overwhelming number of requests to install parklets because there is a fee upfront that would be required to actually purchase the materials and assemble the product as well. And that is something that we have to be sensitive to when thinking about whether or not that this is a quality of amenity that we want to accommodate in our community. What I'm trying to do is create one tool, what, and, and what needs to be a very large toolbox to help our businesses and other, sort of those, those businesses that need ways to spread out. And I think that this is just one of those tools that can do that. I am anticipating submitting a communication at the end to talk about the fee for this year, but I still do think and stand behind it. A $200 permit fee is in alignment with what other communities are doing and something that if you go much higher, makes it cost prohibitive and will really be a deterrent for businesses in terms of wanting to do this.
Alder Dorf?
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Johnson. I, I love the idea of these parklets. I think it's a great idea. As you started talking, that came to mind was, but what about parking utility? Because I know that they have to fund themselves. And the $10 bag rate, correct me if I'm wrong, but Director Grenier, does $10 cover what it would cost or what someone would pay if they parked there all day?
Yes.
So that's all it would cost for parking 12 hours somewhere or however many hours? It's $10?
Correct.
Okay. So for me to vote in favor of this, I, I would have to know how we're going to fund parking utility. And can we do that at this meeting? Does this have to go back until we can, can have a plan on how we're going to make up that shortfall? I agree that it does sound pretty cost prohibitive and I agree that these are, this is a great idea to have these parklets, but I don't think that underfunding the parking utility is a good idea. And, and there's still, maybe even if they do go to another spot, there's still not those spots available. So I'm asking the question, how can we fund? How can we make this up? Or maybe we, we, I guess one more idea, maybe we have a limit. Maybe we have a limit. There's this many parklets that can, you can have and this is how we'll make up that many parklets. We can't just have it like wide open.
Right. Director Bonk?
Thank you, Mayor. Sure. So in terms of subsidizing the revenue, I think, you know, we will look at what's the differential between a, a space that was occupied all day and what's the amount of revenue that was generating versus the amount of revenue that would be coming in from a permit? I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay. And, and so I think two possible sources. One would be to look at the tax increment districts that we have. Both 5 and 13 cover most of the downtown. Depending on the cost, you could look at having some administrative expenses to offset that. I think in terms of a, you know, you look at it as a business incentive or a program incentive, right? Because we're trying to help the businesses and so we're helping to offset the cost of allocating some of these spaces. There is an outside chance potentially you could look at CARES funding. You know, again, the, the rules are, are still being finalized on that. And I believe it fits most of the criteria and depending on how things get allocated, that could be potential. Again, some of the things that are being done are to, to help businesses, you know, survive based on, you know, impacts of the pandemic. So, right, you know, those that have very small seating areas, being able to expand outdoors, that could be a potential. You know, but again, you know, then it's a, it's a cost from another spot in terms of, you know, the, the fund balances that we have in our tax increment districts, you know, shifting it over, you know, to, to parking utility. Again, it's something that, that we could do. However, I would probably recommend, you know, doing it only for, for one year so we could see how it went rather than, you know, committing to a long-term issue with that. But I think, you know, it'd be between myself and Director Grenier to kind of discuss, all right, what, what is the anticipated shortfall? What's that delta and, and how can we make that up with either TID or CARES funding?
Thanks, Director. Any further comments, Alder Dorf?
Does it, do you feel that we can make that decision at this meeting, Director Bonk? Do we have enough information?
Yeah, I, I think in terms of just, I mean, administrative authority, in, in terms of allocating expenditures, I believe, and Director Almecor, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's up to $25,000. I don't anticipate it expanding beyond that. If it would go beyond that in terms of the expense, that would have to come back through a committee and council for approval.
And so right now, I think it said it's for three years. Did I just hear you say you thought it should be for one year?
Uh, in, in terms of bridging the gap, I would only really want to, to commit, you know, to bridging that gap for this first year to see how it went. In terms of the, the three years of the parklet, I don't think there's any reason to, you know, to change that at, at this time. I will just say also, just from the business perspective, I, I would not recommend holding or waiting on this. I think people, businesses are really anxious to look to do anything that they can, especially this wave we're in. You know, if things get shut down or more restrictions in place for indoor places, indoor dining, you know, just from the economic development perspective, we're trying to provide businesses any opportunity possible to expand their space. So whether that's, you know, in their parking lot or in these cases on public space, we'd like to be able to do that. I think time is of the essence for, for that.
I can understand that. I'm just concerned, is there enough money to, to cover this? But I'll let someone else talk. Thank you.
Alder Galvin.
You're muted.
Alder Galvin, you're muted.
Thank you. And I apologize for that. I, I'm in my fifth year as an Alder and what I, we stood out, we were always guilty and we were guilty even before I was an Alder of putting off to tomorrow what we should be taking care of today. I think that too many in the past, we've said, we'll take care of it later on. we'll take care of it later on. And we find ourselves again in the economic difficulties that we're faced with today, which are only exasperated by the impact of the COVID virus. And pushing us into a corner that it's very hard for us to make a budget, and to do the improvements into this community that we that need to be done, quite frankly. And we're staring in the face of it. Done the work, sewer system, storm sewers, everything else. And now we're looking at budgeting for trying to build up some kind of a font for parking ramps and that kind of stuff. And we're saying, ah, you know, let's let's take care of that later on down the road. And when we do things like that is when we always end up getting jammed up. I like this idea. It was one of my constituents that made me aware of this, and I put it toward Director Bonk's office. And I'm very much in favor. But at the same time, we have to be cautious. And I understand those parking spots are not full, you know, the entire time, all the time, especially now during COVID. And I think we should be doing what we can to help the restaurants downtown. But at the same time, I'm not comfortable approving this unless I have some guaranteed revenue source to make up the loss. I mean, if we could find a revenue source, some other revenue source, to start funding DPW for these parking ramps, I'd say do away with charging these restaurants any kind of a fee at all. I mean, make life a little bit easier. They aren't making any money right now. They're barely breaking even. But again, I don't want to get stars in my eye about a great project and then hurt the city at the same time. It makes no sense to do that. Been guilty of this times in the past, and we're paying the price for it now. That's just my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Honor. Yeah, I'm supporting this. I think for me, we're in an emergency situation, and there are businesses that are just that aren't making it, and some teetering. And so I'm willing to go an extra mile here, because I think we lose those businesses, we're really going to be hurt. I mean, talk about loss of revenue. There's a huge loss of revenue for the city. So I think for this first year, I feel comfortable enough, with all the options we have, we can cover this for this first year, size it all up, and then know what we need to do going forward. Maybe we need to raise the permit. Maybe we need to figure out other funding sources or whatever. But I think right now, these are emergency times, and I'm willing to really step out a bit to help help out these businesses. Because I remember when our downtown was pretty bare. And that was that was rough for the city, too. And that was, I just don't want to go back there. So I know how they're struggling, and I think they can handle the 200 this year. So I kind of like the idea of getting it. But for this first year, I think 200 is fine. I trust Alder Johnson's calculations there. And I was talking with businesses, and I've had a small talk with Jeff Merkis, and I know Alder Johnson has too. I think this is just, you know, we're going to be throwing the bones constantly. We're in an epidemic. We're in an emergency situation. And I'm I think it's on our shoulders to do what we can for our constituents and our businesses first. And then we're going to have hell to pay later, maybe. I don't know. Hopefully, it sounds like now we've got enough options, we can cover this first year. So I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Attorney Chavez. Can I chime in?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to read the language that you had sent over. You want me to do that?
Actually, I was going to address Alder Scannell's comment, because I think that's functionally different from what I drafted. So my understanding of what you guys are looking for is a permit fee that is $200 from how this starts here on out. But this is not a one-time fee. If instead you're looking for a one-time discount, then preferred method would be to leave the current, the current language in place establishing that it'll be, you know, well, actually, it's established pretty easily here. So leaving that in place, and instead, looking for an alternative revenue in order to waive that, which would have to be done through probably finance committee.
Couldn't we amend this going forward if we need to adjust that 200 permit fee? Couldn't we amend the ordinance?
Yes, you can always amend an ordinance. But what I'm saying is that if what we're proposing is a one-year waiver of the fee, then we're not really looking to amend the link.
I don't think we're gonna, I'm not going to support that. I'm going to support the 200. I like the idea of not having it, but I I misspoke if I gave that impression. I'm going to support the 200 for this year. I like the idea of not having any fee, but I think we need to this year. So I I'm not supporting no fee at all this year.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if you want the rate for just this year. So if you're okay with the fee being the actual bagging fee starting next year, then the language we have is appropriate. And instead, you could find a way to waive all but 200 of the permitting fees this year instead.
So I guess I'm a little confused, attorney. Are you suggesting we could simply leave the ordinance as is, and then administratively, we would sort of discount the fee by coming up with revenue to supplement the cost?
Administratively, it'd be through finance. So finance could find the would find the revenue source, or the if the revenue source is identified, then then it could be done at the administrative level, or council gives general approval to the administration to just find those fees to cover it. Then yes, there could be a discount of the of the fee for this year only, so that the rate would be handled in its entirety. It's just that $200 will still be coming from the applicant essentially.
Okay.
I just, what I'm looking for is clarification. Are you guys looking to make the $200 rate permanent, or is it a request to just discount it for this year? Because those are two very different things when we're dropping the ordinance.
Right. Let's go back to the author, Alder Johnson.
So my amendment is to make the $200 permanent. That's the amendment that should be being debated on the floor right now.
Okay. And Attorney Chavez, the language that you sent over to me reflects Alder Johnson's intent?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to read that to the Alders so that you have that in front of you. So the amendment language reads as follows. The fee for a parklet permit shall be $200 for permits issued in 2020, and thereafter shall be established annually by resolution at a rate of not less than $200. Alder Vanderleest?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that, you know, going forward for the first year, we're gonna we're gonna waive that fee for the first year. Is that correct? Is that what we're looking to do? Or are we gonna are we voting on the $200 fee for right now for the rest of the year, and then moving forward for 2021 to be 200, 2022 would be 200, $200 fee annually? Is that correct?
Well, the language that that I just read to counsel says that we would have a rate of $200 for permits issued in 2020, and thereafter shall be established annually by resolution at a rate of not less than $200. So council--
I'm comfortable with that then, Mayor. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you. I support it.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
I, if it's possible, I'm going to admit I'm not a huge Robert Rules guy. But I'd like to make an amendment to that amendment, that it's $200 this year. And the only way we go under $200 for the years after that is if council can find the money to make up the difference. I cannot support something that's just painting us into a corner financially to benefit the restaurants at the adverse effect on our Department of Public--
Mayor, this is Alder LaFave.
Alder LaFave, go ahead.
I concur. I cannot support this going on going in the future. I can see maybe we can do it this year. Because there is a because of the virus, these restaurants are struggling, it would help them. But I cannot go for all the years in the future, because we do need the money for our ramps. We have to realize that we can't cut our arm off, or hand off, you know, or how do you say that? You know what I mean? I tried to think how to say it. But we have to be careful what we're doing, because we can't short ourselves in the future for future needs. We have to be careful on this. I would support 200 for this year. And then I think we need to look at each year separately. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Attorney Chavez, can you respond to Alder Galvin and Alder LaFave's suggestion?
Yes, Mayor. The proper procedure would be for it to be, well, okay, so this is already amendment. So the amendment needs to be voted on before a secondary amendment could be proposed. And the second amendment that I'm hearing from Alder Galvin and Alder LaFave is that this would be essentially the language would be left in place, and the city would be looking for an alternative to in order to discount the rate for this year. And actually, you know, that's really not even an amendment that needs to be made. It's just in opposition to this amendment.
Unless there are others who'd like to speak, I think--
Mayor?
Yes, Ald Johnson.
Thank you. Director Grenier, do you have data on what the occupancy rates are of our parking meters?
Not immediately available.
But but you would agree that it is not 100%?
No, the $900 shortfall that I quoted would come out to 11 out of 1,300, which assumed 85% occupancy.
Add, so here's the thing. I mean, if we have a $200 permit fee for a parklet that's installed in a parking space that does not have a meter, we've actually had a net income. And there are a number of areas that are accommodating for these where where that would certainly be the case. But I think one of the things that we keep talking about is this shortfall. What shortfall? There's a hypothetical projection that we have not established. And I think, I mean, I'm telling you right now, folks, if you get out and talk to any business owner right now that would mildly be interested in this, if we go back to the daily bag, then we may as well not even pass this ordinance, because they will not take out the permit for that. The math doesn't work. You can't you can't pay for, I mean, that kind of fee, and still generate the tables that you need to generate to make that work. So I certainly do not support going back to the daily bag rate fee. There's a reason I proposed the $200 amendment. That is what I support. And I think if we see one to two businesses that legitimately leverage this this year, I would be-- So we're not talking about a significant thing here. I do support what Attorney Chavez had mentioned, which is reestablishing that fee by resolution each year, because in a hypothetical scenario, let's say 20 businesses step up and want to do it this year. Okay, then maybe I can see where there's a serious conversation that needs to be had. And what Attorney Chavez has proposed gives us that ability on an annual basis to say, you know what, the scales have tipped the wrong way, we need to bring it back. And I think we can do that. But we invest in quality of life amenities all the time in our community. We spend a substantial amount of money on parks and other amenities, and we don't have nearly this level of debate as we are about 160-foot square foot parklet. Like, I think this is a quality of life amenity that people would enjoy. I think it's something that would be a very, very good part of our business community. But we have to make it accessible. If it's not accessible, it's not going to be used. And then this conversation's all for naught. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
And again, I'm totally in favor of the $200 fee this year. Let's see what happens. Let's reevaluate it for next year. But I'm not willing to let it rest with us taking a look at it next year, evaluate it. I'm next year, let's let's see what happens. But I want us to have it in place to replace those funds. Even if it's only two, three, four, five, 10 restaurants that take advantage of this, we still have to do our due diligence to the taxpayers and replace those funds somehow. And we do this all the time, not just here, but everywhere. We're looking at a budget shortfall this year already. It's thousands of dollars. Next year, what is it going to be like? And the year after that? And all of a sudden, it's going to be five, six, seven years down the road, and we're going to have to start looking at bonding for a ramp. And if money's saved up and ready to go, we could save the taxpayers' money there. And I agree, I want these restaurants to succeed. And that's why I'm saying this year, I'm happy with the $200 fee. But I want that amendment, or that ordinance, to read that we will replace that money, that loss of revenue. And I would like DPW to take a look at those stalls, to see how much they are really being used in the past. We do have a legitimate idea of how much the loss is, or isn't, if, you know, what you're saying is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So we have Alder Johnson's amendment on the table before us. So if there are no further comments on that, I think we should go to a vote.
Mayor?
Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Mayor. For one year or for three years? I, my computer conked out here up on Washington Island, and I'm having a hard time. But I just wanted to know, what was the timeframe on this? Were you looking at one year, two years?
A permanent model.
A permanent, permanent.
But but Attorney Chavez's point, we would annually review by resolution the permit fee.
Okay. So there's a chance, as I've said, we could look at something like this next year. Are you okay with that? Because I'm kind of leaning toward what Alder Galvin said. If that's something to you, that we do the 200 this year, and then look at it again next year to make sure that we're, you know, working it out. Is that is that okay? I don't know if you feel that way. But I I'm leaning toward what Alder Galvin said.
Mayor, this is Attorney Chavez. Just one additional thing to add. So you're aware, when we've had the jump, substantial jump from one year to the next, we run into problems. But I just want you all to be aware of that situation of potentially deciding in two years that $200 just isn't working, having a substantially jump to the full rate.
Right. Seeing further comments?
Could I get point of order at that point?
Yeah, Alder Johnson.
Thank you. Attorney Chavez, I just want to be clear. So what I'm looking to do with my amendment is eliminate the daily meter bag rate wording. And I wanted to replace it with the $200 permit fee, which you suggested it would be best to not have that amount in the ordinance, but that by resolution, we would establish the annual permit fee. And that's that's where we're at right now. Is that correct?
What we're doing right now is kind of a hybrid. Normally, we wouldn't go this route. We would not put a fee into the ordinance and then establish it by resolution, because it kind of creates a standard, rather than than the, you know, the basis for it that's established by resolution annually. Trying to do it right now to make it work, so we don't hold this up. But generally, if we're going to do it by resolution, we just never would put a fee identified in the actual ordinance. It would just always say established by resolution.
And so that because we're establishing it by resolution, every year, we would reevaluate that by default thing? Is that correct?
The plan will be, once we get the new code codified, all the fees will be established by resolution. It's what we've been moving to. And then those will be reviewed by council on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And we will move to a vote. Alder, would you like a recorded vote?
Yes, please.
All right, we will use the board on Alder Johnson's amendment, which again, reads, the fee for a parklet permit shall be $200 for permits established in 2020, and thereafter shall be established annually by resolution at a rate of not less than $200. and thereafter shall be established annually by resolution at a rate of not less than $200." Mayor?
Mayor, Alder Dorf has lost her internet. Hello? Yes, um, can you hear Alder Dorf on my phone? Alder Dorf, how do you vote on this amendment?
That was unclear.
Okay, Ald, Alder Dorf says she's trying to regain her internet, but she'd like to vote yes on the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm out as well. I'm, I'm gonna have to vote verbally.
And?
I will vote yes with the, under the stipulation that we are looking at this next year. So I will vote yes for now. Yes.
All right, so that is a vote of 11 to 1. The amendment is successful. Entertain a motion to adopt as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alder Stoyer, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. Discussion on the amended motion. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Alder Dorf voted yes.
Very good. The ayes have it. The motion is successful. We are now on to the report of Protection and Policy Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder LeFave to approve report A, committee from the meetings on June 8th and June 22nd, 2020. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Item one.
One, any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it. The report has been approved, the exception of item one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell and the second was by Alder Corpus Dax. Item was pulled by Alder Galvin. You have the floor.
Thank you. The only concern I have with this is that the security plan, once again, seems to be lacking in the materials that were posted. The plan that's supposed to be worked out, that the police department is missing part of the page. And there is no indication that the cameras that they're talking about being in use have been installed or if there's any recording device. That's part of the problem with most of the form being missing. I don't even know if it was ever signed by the police department.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. We're going to go to Commander Warwick, if he's on the line, to respond to Alder Galvin.
Um, I, I have not been briefed on the security plan for that. But if it's missing a page, we can refer it back to the committee and I'll have it prepared for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Commander. I believe Alder Stoyer was seeking recognition.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At committee, my understanding was that the police and the law, and law department had no issue with it. So I, this is new information that was, has been brought forward. So I don't know if there's time sensitivity with this establishment or not, but the committee usually will listen to law department and to the police department. And I, I do remember that we didn't seem to have a problem with it. So with that being said, if it's not time sensitive, you know, I'll defer to Commander Warwick on that.
Alder Chavez, do you have any comments from the law department?
I do not. I do know that Attorney Bungard is very thorough in her review of things before she gives the approval from the law department then. So she did not alert me to any concerns that ever raised with that one.
Yeah, so that's the thing. Can I ask Alder Galvin where he got that information?
Sure, I, I, I looked at the packet.
Oh, okay.
And I guess my concern is not so much with the attorney's office. And I don't want to besmirch the police department, but there seems to be lately, when they're going through these security plans, parts of the plans are not being signed off on or they're being crossed out, they're being changed, they're not being filled in. And quite frankly, I don't even know if they go back and verify if any of these establishments have installed any of the security measures or anything that they say they're going to. And so I'm concerned. And as anyone knows, once we grant the license, if they don't comply, it's very difficult to get them to comply and it turns into a legal mess that costs us nothing but time. I'd rather have everything done front the way it's supposed to be than after the fact.
Well, that is concerning to me as well. So I don't know, I would, I would suggest that, that we need to tighten up on that. So I, I mean, we as a committee base a lot of our decisions on what law and police say. So I think moving forward, we're going to need to tighten that up. So I don't know whatever that'll take. I'll talk to you about that later. But I would say I'll, I'll defer to you, Alder Galvin, on this.
Well, I mean, and obviously, if there's a way of handling this, that if the PD can produce or the city can produce the proper paperwork that indicates the security cameras have been installed and that everything's been signed off properly on the form, I have no problem with, you know, if there's a way of doing it so we don't have to wait to the next council meeting, which is July 21st. And I can see where that could be a significant impact, even though we have COVID going on right now. It's still going to be a significant impact to a business that hopes to get up and running.
Attorney, Attorney Chavez, would there be a way to have a motion to approve contingent on identifying the appropriate documentation, confirming that PD has reviewed and approved?
Yes, so there is no, we're delegating the authority for final approval to protection and policy and stipulating that the, the approval is, is based on receiving confirmation of the conditions having to that.
True with that.
And if I could add?
Okay, that's good for me, too.
Alder Stoyer, just, just to-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Even though we're working remotely, just gotta respect the-
I'm trying, sorry.
So Alder Galvin, is that an amendment that you would?
Yes, exactly. I would be, I'd be more than happy to endorse that with that amendment.
So we do have an amendment offered, a second, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion has been amended. Entertain a motion.
Or as amended? Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Vanderlees to approve as amended. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The ayes have it. Motion has been amended. On to the report of the Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens to approve report A, which is the report of Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Any names on here for what you'd like to be recorded as abstaining? Any names under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, the ayes have it. The report has been approved. Report of the Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax to approve report O, which is the report of the Plan Commission. From the meeting on June 22nd, 2020. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder Corpus Dax and seconded by Alder Scannell to approve report P, which is the report of the Finance Committee on June 16th, 2020. Any items under this report to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion of Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve report U, which is the report of the Park Committee from the meetings on June 10th and June 24th, 2020. Any items under this report to handle separately?
Yes, sure.
Scannell?
Where's the, I'm not finding the Bay Beach.
Number two.
I'm sorry, yeah, right there, right in front of my face. Number two, like to pull number two, please.
Very good. Any others?
Mayor, I would also like number six, please.
Two and six. Items two and six will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it. items two and six. On item two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, pulled by Alder Scannell. You have the floor.
I guess I would just like to refer this back to committee. I've had a talk with our director, Dishite, Park Director, and he thinks he's got a plan that will be a little different insofar as phasing things in, that will meet everybody's concerns and needs on this. And he just needs a little more time to flush that out. And so if you send this back, you can come to our Park Committee at our next meeting. So motion to refer.
Second.
Motion has been made to refer back to committee by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any further comments?
Mayor?
Alder LeFave, go ahead.
I'll vote no to refer. I want this to, I want this to be tabled, to be held. I do not believe that the, the beach itself, neither the, then we don't need the changing rooms. I believe this is a waste of the money. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, Alder. Any others? Hearing no others, we have motion to refer back. It's been seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The item has been referred back to committee. On to item six, your wishes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell. The second was?
Weary.
Alder Weary. Alder LeFave, you have the floor.
Um, yes, I was doing some calculations. The annual fee goes from 35 to 60. That's a 71% increase. And then the senior goes from 30 to 50. That's a 67% increase. The only way I'd approve this is if those increases will now go into actually fixing the docks. Those are long overdue. We need money. We do need the money to fix those docks. I want to know, with this increase, when can we see the docks, the new docks put in, improved?
Thanks, Alder. I, I believe we'd need more revenue than would be generated from the fee increase to, to improve those docks. But we'll go to Director Dishite for some context on the fee increase.
Yes, you're correct. You're correct, Mayor, that the fee increase would go into effect on, at the budget year. So come January 1st is when the fee would go into effect if it's approved. And yes, all of the funding would go into a dedicated account going towards the maintenance and improvements at the Metro Boat Launch. Would it help to decrease the cost of the launch? I guess it probably would. But the cost to fix those ramps and launches would be significantly higher than one, one year of revenue would. So we would have to look at bonding for this in the near future if we want those ramps fixed sooner than later.
Right. No, what I mean is I don't want this going to the parking lot or the other part. I want this extended fee, increase in the fee, going just to replacing those docks. And I know you'll be short with the fee, but I mean that it goes towards that extra amount to go just for those docks. That's what the boaters have been requesting. I had requests from a lot of people talking about those. The docks are so bad. That's, I mean, otherwise I think they're going to be upset with, with these increased fees.
Thanks, Alder. Additional comments? Hearing none, we have a-
Mayor?
Alder Stoyer, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been down to Metro Boat Launch quite a bit, too, and it's not just the docks. It's also the parking lot, which is in terrible shape. So I, I would like to see that taken care of as well. And I don't know, I don't know if Director Dishite can address that problem. Is that something just to patch up or is there, is that, that parking lot really is in terrible shape? So I don't know how you want to address that.
Well, as I mentioned previously, so these fees will offset some of the costs to do the parking lots and also the, the replacement of the ramps. But they're not going to pay for these in full. So this will help, but we'll still have to bond for both projects. I know on an annual basis, Director Grenier and I do review the budget as far as how much revenues we receive in that account on a yearly basis. And we allocate the funding accordingly for the highest needs. And we'll continue to do that, you know, if these fees are increased.
Director Dishite, am I correct in, in remembering not all of this fee increase, not all the money comes to the city? There is a split with Brown County taking some of it and then some of it comes to us. And then just for edification of the council, all of the money that we do receive from docking fees is and always has been in a segregated account.
And that's correct. So any money we generate will go back into the Metro Boat Launch. But this is a municipal, an intergovernmental municipal decision. So we're working with Brown County, we're working with the Village of DePere, we're working with the Village of Wrightstown. And we're all proposing the exact same fee structure moving forward so that there's some consistency between all of the different docking. So that one particular ramping location is inundated with a lot of launchers because their fee is significantly cheaper than the other municipalities. So in the past, we've always had the same fees between the different municipalities. We're all proposing the same fee together. I know DePere has already brought their fee forward and that's been approved at their committee level. I think it still has to go to council. And then Wrightstown and Brown County are also going to bring this forward in the near future also.
Thanks for that, Director.
Mayor?
Alder Stoyer, go ahead.
Yes, I was going to ask Director Dishite, you know, so it went to DePere and Wrightstown is coming up as well. Is there a scenario where, let's say, Green Bay wouldn't approve it and they would approve it? I mean, what would that cause? I mean, you're, you're looking forward to have all three municipalities take care of that. So what if it does not happen, you know, or two vote, one don't?
My recollection from DePere, when I talked to the director there, is that their approval of the fee structure was contingent upon all of the other municipalities adopting the same fee structure. And that is actually the motion that we brought forward at Park Committee also.
I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you. Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. The ayes have it. Motion has been approved. Personnel Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve report R, which is the report of Personnel Committee. 2020. Any items under this report to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay, the ayes have it. The report has been approved. On to the report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens to approve report S, which is- Pedestrian Commission from the meeting on fifteen, twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Onto the Ad Hoc Committee on Elections.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Galvin to approve Report T, which is the report of the Ad Hoc Committee on Elections. Meetings on May twenty eighth, June fourth, June eleventh, and June eighteenth, twenty twenty. Any items under this report to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Received and placed on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax, received and placed on file, the Municipal Court and Building Permit Reports for May twenty twenty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. Report has been received and placed on file. Committee of the whole, we'll just take these individually. Item one, consideration with possible action on the resolution extending the state of emergency for the City of Green Bay COVID- nineteen response. We've been extending these to coincide with, um, with upcoming council meetings. That's again what we are doing upon the recommendation of our emergency manager, uh, Fire Chief Litton, as well as Law Department and, uh, and our city attorney Chavez. Any discussion here? Hearing none, I will.
Alder Weary, Alder Weary.
Alder Weary.
Alder, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did, um, in the past month since we met, uh, have there been any actions taken using, uh, the emergency declaration? You know, by the staff or yourself? Have we needed it?
I have not taken any action from this office. Um, I, I, I don't believe any others have been taken, but Attorney Chavez and Chief Litton feel free to, to weigh in.
Uh, they are the only, uh, one that I am aware of. Well, actually, I shouldn't say that. There are a couple of things that are happening. One is the expansion of the premises. Um, the general ordinance, the second one up on the, the whole, to expand it beyond the license premises. That is being done pursuant to the, um, the, uh, emergency declaration. And then I know that, um, PD, I'm sorry, not PD, Fire Department has needed to do some, um, procurement, emergency procurement, um, due to, due to the COVID response. Um, and we use this, the fact that we're under an emergency, so as our basis to, to do the emergency procurement.
Very good. Uh, Alder, further comments, questions?
Uh, no, right now I'm, you know, obviously hoping that we can get back to our normal form of government here pretty soon. So I'm not sure yet a foothold for this or not. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder.
I have a question, Mayor.
Uh, Alder, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I did see that it was attached to the, the agenda. At least in civic clerk, it wasn't. And in the past, the resolution, continuation of the resolution, we had some language that we'd be voting on. Is that available or was this just an oversight?
It is located under the resolutions.
Okay.
It is item sixteen.
Thank you.
You need a motion on this?
Uh, that's what I was just gonna ask. Attorney Chavez, since it's under resolution, do we need any here?
Not at this time. Um, this is really just your opportunity to discuss, to discuss whether or not you want to continue with it, but the action item is the resolution.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we will simply move on to item two, consideration with possible action on General Ordinance number twenty twenty, repealing and recreating GBM's C-section thirty-three dot oh three, parent five, relating to temporary expansion of premises. Uh, Attorney Chavez, can you, um, briefly explain?
Yeah, so there are two real changes that were made. Um, the first is, um, in the initial draft, because we were trying to do in such an expedited manner, class E permits, um, or licenses did not get included in the expansion. So this corrects that and includes class E. Um, and then the other thing that, um, we're adding is to give explicit authority to, um, also unlicensed premises to restaurants that do not serve alcohol. Um, the reason being is that we thought that a staff level, that there was adequate, um, opportunity to expand it under using, uh, bonuses. And there is only opportunity for the planning director to expand it for fifteen days. So this allows him to, to expand it for the same period of time as license premises.
Great. Thanks for that explanation. Any comments here from council? Seeing none, um, here too, we've got an action item upcoming. So I believe we can just move on to item three. Uh, update with possible action on the status of twenty twenty, new Green Bay budget, including impacts and changes caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Here I'm going to go to Director Ellenbecker, who can walk council through the, uh, the document that, uh, that was shared just before our council meeting. Director Ellenbecker.
Yes, thank you. Again, I apologize for the last minute of sending out the document, um, but I mean, it should be at least in your in overview on where we think at this time, the twenty twenty, um, budget, um, projection will fund. Um, again, revenues is where we're going to have some issues, some shortfalls in revenues, um, property tax. We think we're going to be fine in, in that area. And then the taxes, um, at this point, we do project maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short, and that's really on your hotel room tax. Um, again, Packer season could have some bigger impact on that line item, whether it is played, partially paid, played or not played at all, but this is a projection at this time. We know that we have reduced our liquor licenses to about, about fifty percent, and so that we're, we're looking to be, is short, um, a little on the liquor license, burglar alarms and permits, about a hundred and forty thousand. Fines and penalties at this point, a projection is that we're going to be short about a hundred and twenty thousand. Public charges for services, um, at this point, there's a projection of a shortfall for park rental and admissions. Um, some numbers we had received from Parks Department. Um, I am showing a shortfall of about a hundred and forty thousand. And then in interest, um, we're looking at interest on the cash that we have in our banks because of the, our slow interest rate that we're going to be below budget by about two hundred and eighty thousand. So we are looking at a projected short budget rate, shortfall of about eight hundred and thirty thousand. Then we move into the expenses, um, and because of some of the programs that were not running the parks area, including pools and park programs, and some other changes that were, um, completed in the, in that area, we have some savings on salaries and some fringe benefits. So we will see some savings. In total, parks, programs and park, um, pools, you're going to see probably about a hundred thousand dollar savings for not running those programs this summer. We, um, we have put in place, um, to, um, freeze travel and to try to reduce, um, other training at fifty percent. We think that's going to be about a ninety thousand dollar savings. We also are looking to take a ten percent reduction in our materials and supplies of ninety thousand. So at this time, we are expecting that we will see some savings in our twenty twenty budget expenses of about four hundred and twenty thousand. That would leave us a shortfall of about four hundred and ten thousand. What we have, um, pulled together is, um, you'll, you'll actually see two columns on the document, but we know that we have a CARES HHS grant, which really covers really our H, um, EMS. We have some money that's allocated to, um, the City of Green Bay. There is some DOJ grant allocations of a hundred and fifty one thousand. And, um, we also have some CARES money, which is an allocation for the roads to recovery and some FEMA. Now, these items are all only going to offset expenses that we have incurred because of the COVID. So we have actually not taken those grant dollars into consideration for our short, shortfall, because it really should just offset any additional expenses we had. What we are looking at to help cover our shortfall is, we are looking to have a tran, um, an operational reduction in, for our transit, um, costs. We budgeted one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand because of some, um, transit getting CARES dollars. They are looking to give, um, to reduce the amount of the operational levy for this year because, due to COVID. So we think that is about two hundred thousand dollar, um, additional revenue that we will see this year, only this year because of the CARES money. Um, we have delayed and, um, not, um, delayed a few hires. At this point, we think that's about worth twenty-five thousand. We always have, we have the contingency account. If we didn't, if we were to allocate the contingency of a hundred thousand, we would have that toward this budget for shortfall. We have the GERP, um, agreements that were just approved in the Finance Committee, and that will bring seventy-five thousand into the twenty twenty budget that was not in the twenty twenty budget. So we will have that additional revenue. Um, we also had a, the fire contract was settled at, um, two percent, and we originally budgeted for two and a half because we didn't know how the contract was going to end. That is a fifty thousand dollar savings. And we also are going to be working with, um, all departments to reduce, have a slight reduction in overtime of a hundred thousand dollars. Those items altogether will be about five hundred and fifty thousand, and we are looking to have this, cover the shortfall of four-ten. So, um, working with, um, the mayor, working with, um, senior staff, um, we are very confident that these changes on the bottom will cover the shortfall without doing any furloughs with it, with any additional changes. However, of course, council has the, you know, right to, if you have a recommender, want to make some other changes than what we have put in front of you. But to, to this date, we believe that we will cover the twenty twenty budget, um, shortfall.
Great. Thanks so much for that presentation. Director, Alder Vanderleest, like to speak.
Vanderleest, you're muted.
We're getting there, but there's a bunch of resolutions.
Vanderleest?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it was for Diana on the, the City of Green Bay that we collected our own taxes, you know, in person and, uh, you know, the city collected. Did we have a savings? What was the savings involved with, uh, the city collecting the taxes? Uh, rather than having the county do it, what was the savings that dollars amount?
Yes.
It was for Diane.
Yep.
We, we did know that we were going to collect them, so we budgeted the additional, the, there was no savings to do that. There was some additional, there was some additional, um, money that we were going to receive in, in interest. Unfortunately, with the interest stayed high enough in the beginning of the year that we were able to, um, rec, have additional interest, um, but we budgeted for it. So it really came in, it came in very close to budget. Um, again, increased, increased expenses because of the additional staff we needed, additional equipment we needed, and services that we had to pay for. And then it was offset by, um, those expenses were offset by interest revenue that we budgeted for. So it came in at, um, came right in at budget. Um, at that point, I think we were expecting somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand additional dollars in interest offset by expenses.
Uh, is the city going to collect their taxes? In other words, for the twenty twenty-one year, are they going to collect the taxes in the same procedure that they did in twenty twenty?
The, the City of Green Bay will be collecting, yeah, City of Green Bay will be collecting the taxes December twenty twenty to February of twenty twenty-one. Um, will we be doing it exactly the same way? We are looking for enhancements. We are working with Brown County and the, the taxing software to try to have more improvements, um, so that it will even be more efficient from last year. But yes, we are planning to collect.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you. This is for, uh, Director Ellenbecker. Under proposed plan to cover short, shortfall, uh, you have, uh, Packer overtime, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. How does that happen? I thought the Packers reimbursed the city for the overtime.
They do, and that's why actually I have it in the column, um, the more left column. That actually has no financial impact on the shortfall because all Packer overtime is for every dollar we spend, the Packers do, I mean, for every, yeah, every expense that we have, we, um, are offset and we bill them back. So, um, when you look at the budget, you might see if, what, if we don't have Packer overtime this year, you won't see the revenue and you won't see the expense, but they're one for one and they'll offset. So they're not, they are not included in, um, in any way to cover a shortfall.
Okay, so it's just a wash as always. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question's for, I guess whoever can answer it. The one hundred thousand dollars in overtime that we're reducing, uh, what services will we receive less of? Does that mean less grass cutting or traffic enforcement? What, what's going to be affected?
I can start the conversation. There has been, there has been some discussions with the Fire Chief and for, with the Police Chief. And to date, I believe the Police Chief has already worked on some changes, um, within his department on some training. Um, we've also, um, asked all of city departments, but they're relatively small dollars, but to not incur, but, um, and not incur any overtime unless it is actually absolutely either emergency or, you know, public safety. Um, so we are looking to also continue to have that discussion as we move forward through the, the rest of the year.
Hmm, I, I think there's going to be some services affected. Otherwise, I think we would have done this last year, probably when we raised taxes an incredible amount. So, um, did we look at furloughs, voluntary furloughs, or what a day of furlough would mean, you know, per day?
Um, yeah, uh, we have estimated when we put the twenty twenty budget together, or previous year, we had put some numbers together for all the non-union employees. One day's, um, furlough is somewhere between eighty to, uh, maybe ninety thousand dollars of a savings.
Okay, um, Director Grenier, um, are you reducing services, uh, due to this? Are, are you losing some overtime and what would it affect?
We've not been involved in the overtime discussions as of yet. If we were, the, the lion's share of our overtime, uh, is spent on snowplowing.
Okay, and that's not really something we could reduce, I don't think. Okay, well, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Alder. Other comments, questions? Okay, as was said, we do not need action here, um, but it is available to council if they would choose to take it. So if there aren't any further questions or comments, we would be able to move on here. Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to suspend the rules, to take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to adopt resolutions one through sixteen. Any discussion?
Can just mark me as no on sixteen, please.
Will do, Alder.
Also, also, uh, Alder Burnett, a no on sixteen.
Very good.
Also, Alder Vanderlees, no on sixteen.
That is noted. Without any further comments, we will use the board.
Mayor, I'll be a yes.
Alder. A reminder to mute your devices if you're not speaking.
Mark.
I'm on vacation, sorry. I'm having a tough day.
Yes.
Yes, Mark.
Yeah, I know.
Those are past twelve zero noting, uh, opposition on item sixteen by, uh, the three Alders. Onto ordinance's first reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Need to handle these separately. There's an amendment on that one.
Okay, then a motion to, uh, adopt, number one.
Second.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Lefave to adopt.
Stand for all your articles on this fantastic.
Mayor, as a clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
The rules do need to be suspended. You can take, you can suspend the rules on both of them, um, to take action on them, and that is required to, so.
Very good. Okay. Very good. Okay. So we will entertain a motion to suspend the rules on item one.
Motion to suspend?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell to suspend the rules and adopt this ordinance with one reading. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay?
Move to amend item one, so that the language regarding the permit fee is consistent with what was discussed on the normal agenda item.
Second.
And an amendment offered by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that amendment will signify by saying aye.
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 Nay?
Motion to adopt is amended.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell to adopt as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? That item has been adopted. Onto item
Motion to suspend the rules to adopt with one reading.
Second.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor of suspension of the rules will signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? The ayes have it, rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? The ayes have it, that item
Um, ordinance will require a roll call vote.
Both of them?
Both ordinances will require a roll call vote, yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain, I guess, a motion to reconsider on item one.
But don't we have had to have voted against it to reconsider it?
No, you just have to be in the majority.
You don't actually have to do a reconsideration, you can just take the vote on the board.
Okay, we will take the both votes on the board for items one and two. Do these need to be done separately, attorney?
Only if there's a call for separation, now that the amendment has been put into place, there's no issue with you taking them up at the same time.
Without any opposition to that, we will take up both with one roll call vote. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board. Mayor, I'm an aye.
Alderman Wery, it didn't come through.
Can you mark me as an aye? I'm not sure why it's not coming through.
Thank you.
I think we should mark you as a mustache.
I must ask you a question, Randy.
Those are adopted, twelve zero. Onto ordinance's first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Again.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to advance items one through three. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay, the ayes have it, maybe these items have been advanced to a final reading.
Do we need a roll call vote on that?
To advance, no, it's just to adopt, you always require a roll call vote for an addition resolution.
All right, so we're on to referral petitions and communications.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. I have two. The first is to the Parks Committee to consider the installation of surveillance equipment at Seymour Park. The second one, I'm looking for some direction from staff to consider a twenty twenty fee waiver for the Parklet Permit Fee Utilizing CARES Act funding. That go to RDA?
CARES?
I would defer to either Director Ellenbecker or Director Vonk as to which committee is the appropriate location for it. It'll sort out what source is being used, city or RDA fund.
So I would recommend sending it to RDA. If there's any change in that plan, they're the ones who have allocated the funds. So we'd have to look at eligibility and then if there's modifications, it would come back to council for any adoption. So that's where the preliminary one was done, so I'd recommend sending it back to RDA. And perhaps maybe I would even loosen that up and just eliminate CARES Act funding. If there's another source that Economic Development Department has that could be used, it doesn't have to be CARES Act funding. Sure.
Thank you, Alder. Any other communications?
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Protection and policy for discussion with possible action on revising the City of Green Bay's Code of Conduct for Elected Officials and the City of Green Bay's Code of Ethics to include provisions that detail what activities are proper and what activities should be prohibited for elected officials in regard to engaging in partisan politics through the use of their Green Bay elected offices.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you. This is on behalf of a constituent, I don't endorse this one way or the other, who was told by the chairman of the Protection and Policy Committee that if she was to get new information on the effects of fluoride on Green Bay residents, that he would be willing to look at it again for consideration. So that's my communication.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to referral petition communications.
Motion to refer. Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Vanderlees to refer all late petitions communications to the proper authority. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? That is successful.
Enter adjourned.
Motion made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by Alder Story, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.